I will call this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Wednesday, October 2nd of 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. We're meeting on Wednesday because National Night Out was yesterday. Mr. Trevino, please call the roll.
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Deacon Robert Gutierrez of St. John's Catholic Church. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads and thank our Heavenly Father for all the blessings that He has bestowed on each one of us. And also that we should accept them with all humility as we strive to make decisions based on love and compassion for all the citizens of San Marcos. We also ask our Lord to send down His Spirit of life on our elected officials, that they may use the gifts given to them by your Creator in such a way that our community will continue to grow, to be a safe and secure place. Lastly, Lord, we ask that you keep our mayor and council members safe at all times, and that they remain healthy as they strive to lead us as our esteemed elected officials. In His most holy name, amen.
Amen, thank you. And if you would join me in pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with equal justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. It is now citizen comment time. The city council hears citizen comments at regular meetings. Those wishing to speak do need to sign up in advance, which can be done online or at the city clerk's office. The deadline is 5:45. Speakers may speak once and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing, I ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You will have three minutes to speak, once you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen, you'll start in the green. When the timer shows only yellow, you have 20 seconds left, or less. And when the timer is red and your time to speak is up, a bell will ring. Mayor and council endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel, and I will ask you to leave the council chambers. And this is your warning if you choose to do those. Our citizen comment this evening is Mr. Baker, Maxfield Baker. He joins us online, and he is online. Okay, Mr. Baker.
Hello, yes. Yeah, there we go. Oh, I didn't mean to have this on the back, here we go. Great, yeah, so my name is Maxfield Baker. I am the founder of the San Marcos Civics Club. I wanted to give you all an update. We had our Reasons Not to Vote rally this past Friday at Hantra on the 27th. We had about 137 people show up to talk about the reasons why they maybe do or do not vote, issues that they think are the worst things in town, and vote on those. And it was an amazing time of community coming together, neighbors, some fantastic music. Notably, council member Garza helped donate some materials so that we could make our own protest signs there for the event, which was kind of a fun way to encourage people to be more civically engaged. I do want to point out that all of city council was invited to join us. I was disappointed that most of you chose not to do that, as well as city staff. Y'all are always welcome to come out to these things. We want you there. In fact, part of our best conversations are when we have, you know, subject matter experts, either elected officials or people who work in those different departments there to help us kind of lead those conversations and, again, better understand how to be more civically engaged. Our next meeting is going to be October 28th. Again, our meetings are the fourth Monday of every month, fourth Monday, every month. And at the 28th, we are inviting the current candidates for city council and mayor to come and speak with us. We had a few join us at our last meeting. Some of you were unable to attend, so we hope you could join us again on the 28th at Hantra from 6:30 to 8:30. You know, these meetings are one of the few opportunities that folks have in our community during the election cycle to actually speak with candidates side to side and really compare answers to a single question answered in a public forum. So they can't say one thing to one group and one thing to another. We really hope that the candidates and the community take advantage of this opportunity. And the civics club moving forward, the worst issue was housing, kind of unsurprisingly. It's unfortunate, though, when we look at the budget for San Marcos, how much of that is focused on housing? As opposed to what was honestly the lowest scoring, which was public safety. You know, when we think about why people are disengaged, oftentimes they'll say things like, "Well, the budget doesn't reflect the needs of our community." And I think that that's kind of the case of what we have here and what we've had for several years. I hope members of council continue to work on those things and reach out to us in the civics club. We would, again, be more than happy to have you all there. You can all even attend all at the same time. You just need to, as I'm sure you're aware, provide the city clerk with a potential for quorum. And then you guys could join us at every single meeting to talk about these important issues and hear what we think needs to be done, and really work to make San Marcos the better place that all of you say you want it to be. So thanks so much, look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
Mr. Trevino and Ms. Baker, was there only a sign up to speak? Okay, then it is time for the consent agenda. I'm asking to pull five and six. These are ordinances, resolutions, and other items, one through eight, that may be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussion or action is held unless council members pull it from the agenda. Do y'all have anything y'all want to pull? No? No? Okay, then I would look for a motion for items one through four and seven and eight.
So moved.
Second.
Second by, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Ms. Trevino.
You want to do the...
Oh, we're using push button. All right.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
All right. And as we generally do, we will move on to our public hearings, and we will come back to the pulled items later. Item nine, please, Mr. Trevino.
Yes, receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-50, annexing into the city approximately 30.69 acres of the following road right-of-way located in East County, Texas, Center Point Road, as it runs from Hunter Road to Interstate Highway 35, McCarty Lane, as it runs from Hunter Road to Union Pacific Railroad, Yarrington Road and Harris Hill Road, both as they run adjacent to the Whisper Development, Posey Road and Old Bastrop Highway, both as they run adjacent to the Trace Development Case, Development Case Number AN-24-06, including procedural provisions and declare an effective date, and consider approval of the ordinance 2024-50 on the first of two readings.
Presentation, Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This annexation, as was read in the caption, is for a handful of roadways and was actually initiated during a conversation between city staff and county staff. In 2015, the state legislature approved a law which stated that cities had to annex right-of-way adjacent to property that they're annexing, and we missed a few. So we're coming through to annex some of those roadways adjacent to older annexations, and also wrapped it up in this, some annexation of roadways to handle some continuity of maintenance, so we don't have little pieces of roadway in the county that are maintained by them, and then we maintain on either side. There is no zoning associated with this annexation, and the roads will take the default FD, Future Development Zoning District, next slide. First on the list is Center Point Road, where we are annexing two segments between Hunter Road and I-35. And as I proceed through the slides, you will see the area to be annexed highlighted in yellow, and the gray area is land within city limits. Everything else is still in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, or ETJ, next slide. The next is McCarty, where we're annexing between Hunter Road and the Union Pacific Railroad, next slide. This map depicts the area near the New Amazon and the Whisper Developments. Here, we're annexing a portion of Yarrington Road, near the intersection with Harris Hill, as well as a stretch and a little segment of Harris Hill, next slide. And finally are the two portions of Posey Road and Old Bastrop Highway in the vicinity of the Trace Development, next slide. This evening, we're holding the public hearing on the annexation. And on the next slide, staff recommends approval as presented. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, is there anyone in chambers or in the lobby who wishes to speak for, against, or about this item? And I will open and close the public hearing, and I'm waiting, I await a motion from council member.
Move to...
Motion by Mr. Gonzalez.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Council, any questions? Ms. Trevino, we will vote by pushing a button.
The motion passes five to zero with two absent.
All right, next item is item 10.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing regarding and discuss a possible adoption on October 15, 2024, of the Vision SMTX Comprehensive Plan as a comprehensive plan of the city of San Marcos, including the preferred scenario map therein as a future land use map of the city to replace a previous comprehensive plan, Vision San Marcos, a river runs through us, an associated preferred scenario map, and provide direction to the city manager.
Presentation.
Good evening, council members. Andrea Villalobos, Assistant Director of Planning. So you've seen many presentations over the past couple of years over the comprehensive plan. And so tonight, we're just going to focus on what's occurred over the past year with the comprehensive plan. So just as a reminder, San Marcos has an existing comprehensive plan, which is called Vision San Marcos, that was adopted in 2013, and it's the comprehensive plan that we use today. In 2020, city council provided us direction to rewrite the comprehensive plan, and that effort is known as Vision SMTX. The purpose of a comp plan is to establish the vision and the goals and the policy direction over the next 20 years here in San Marcos. And it also updates this map shown on this slide on the right, which is our preferred growth scenario map, and that really guides growth over time. Next slide. Because the preferred scenario map is being updated and is essentially changing from six colors on the map for what we call place types to 10 colors on the map, we have to immediately also update this table to inform our zoning changes moving forward. And this table is part of the adoption ordinance, and you've seen it in your past packets as well. Next slide. You've also seen this graphic before. It shows the entire process of the comprehensive plan creation. And we're now all the way to the right side tonight, talking about the comprehensive plan at a public hearing. And on the next slide, I'm going to talk about what we've done since the last time that you saw the plan. Over the past year, we worked significantly with the City Council Comprehensive Plan Committee, which was created in November 2023. In January 2024, city council approved an outreach campaign with the purpose of informing and collecting community comments on the latest version of the comprehensive plan. In February through March, we launched that outreach campaign and collected survey results on the plan. We then met from March to September with our council committee to discuss the survey results, and also that committee made recommendations on the final draft markup of the plan. All of those meetings were open to the public, and the agendas, the packets, and the recordings and the meeting notes are all available online for the community. On September 18th, the council committee provided direction to staff that the Vision SMTX final draft markup be presented to city council this evening at a public hearing with second reading occurring on October 15th. And this is the version of the plan that you're seeing in your packet tonight. Next slide. Staff recommends approval of the Vision SMTX final draft markup as presented in the council packet. And just a reminder, tonight's meeting is a public hearing with no action. Action will occur second reading, which will be on October 15th. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. And just a reminder, the reason it's on second reading is it was in second reading when we postponed it for additional input in the council committee to work. So that's where we left it, and that's where we're going to pick it up, pick it up next time. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak? If you will state your name and your address.
Gabrielle Moore, 814 North Loop Street. I want to thank the committee for considering many of my group's recommendations, specifically adding in missing middle housing references to it, and incorporating transit-oriented development, really appreciate that. And also for adding ADUs in neighborhood medium, that was great. We would love to see ending minimum parking requirements. And I could give, you know, some more details to the committee later. Would love to see the fiscal impacts being more of a focal point in the introduction of the plan. Feel like that's very important just for the fiscal health of the city and the budget. But mostly, you really want to thank the council and the committee specifically.
Diana Baker, 727 Belvin. I just want to thank all the committee members who sat through multiple meetings and worked very, very hard. Especially want to thank the people that had the courage to rewrite this and make it reflect more what went on in those meetings and what the people of the city really wanted. I'm glad that the data was examined, and in the end, I think that the planning department should be congratulated for their work, too. It was very hard, very long, drawn-out process, but, you know, the people of this town, I think, have filled out endless surveys and gone to endless meetings. And I think it really is reflecting the courage of the leaders of this city and people who had absolutely no financial interest at all going in and just really splitting the hairs and getting it right. So I'm grateful for that. I hope this lasts another long time, and I just want to express my gratitude for all the hard work that all these people did for nothing, basically, for, you know, with no financial interest at all. So thank you all.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? We didn't have anyone else sign up. Okay, then I will close the public hearing, and there is no motion this evening. Mr. Gary, can we discuss this, or is this a don't discuss and we discuss next time?
You can discuss it, there's just no action tonight.
Okay.
I'll check the posting here, but...
But we can discuss?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to ask Ms. Moore a question, if you would, could you approach the podium? You mentioned wanting to address the fiscal impacts in the introduction. We moved them from the content in the plan to the appendix.
Yes.
And one of the reasons is because they were done before the housing market went this and did this. And my concern was that that was just such a snapshot in time, so that's why we moved them. Do you want us to mention that they exist and they're in the appendix somewhere in the introduction?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's good. I can, with staff's help, we'll prepare an amendment for that for the next meeting.
Thank you, that was it? Yeah.
Just want to make sure I understood what your suggestion was. Anything else? I can just say we're done with this one, and we're rolling on to the next one?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. It's just a discussion item only tonight, final action on the 15th.
Okay, and thank you for coming to this meeting, Ms. Moore, with your comments. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Okay, so now we're going to go back to items five and six, and I will wait for Ms. Trevino to read it, and then I'll make a motion.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-192R approving the installation of a permanent stained glass public art piece at the San Marcos Public Library authorized by the city manager her designated to sign any documents or take other steps as necessary to procure such installation and declare an effective date.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to type Mr. Scott's, since that'll be his first one for the evening. And here's my question, and I asked on the message board, and I still am not clear into as to which art items come to the city council and which ones do not. I know they're funded in different ways, and there's different, I know there's a number of different things. So I don't have any objection to this one. It's exactly what happens, and I guess the biggest one I'm asking about is the large $100,000 one. That didn't come to council. So I'm trying to figure out why that one didn't, but yet others do. So I just need, I need help understanding, and I know that y'all wrote a bunch of stuff here, but I'm sorry, I'm still unclear.
Hi, Rebecca Evar, Director of Destination Services. I also have Charlotte Watney, who is our arts liaison. The, when you're referring to the large mural, the actual project came before you, but the actual design did not come before you.
Correct.
Yes, and so this is a library project, which they have to approve it by, the library board approves it, and then it comes because it's paid by the Arts Commission. So they're just bringing it before you, already completed what it is, and for your approval. So you approved the other one, you just didn't approve the actual design of it.
Correct, which to me means we didn't fully approve it, because I know that we have done small art projects, like in front of the sculptures in front of the library. I remember one of them was called Becky, and one of them's got the scissors. And they were smaller projects in scope and also in funding. But those came to us for approval with the pictures before those went up. So I'm just still trying to understand why it seems that sometimes we get the design and sometimes we don't.
Charlotte Watney. The ones at the sculpture park, the art park, those were not commissioned pieces. So it was purchased art, so we had pictures of them. Whereas the other one was commissioned, but we didn't know, we didn't go out for a call until we knew that we had approval from council to spend that kind of money on, on the piece. Whenever we do one, like the one at Raymond Lucio coming up, because we had to get approval through more than one board, we had to have a design in advance.
Right.
So...
And that, then, that's part of my question, is sometimes we get the Arts Commission and the library board is involved if it's something that's going in the library. And so I guess I'm still not understanding why the large one, the design, didn't come to council. Because we've done murals before.
Correct, well, the murals, the Arts Commission usually doesn't do murals, the mural committee does it.
Right.
And so anything that the Arts Commission does, we have to have approval to do the purchase. So I believe that was, we brought it to y'all to say, "We want to make this purchase," and so the purchase was approved. I don't think in the ordinance, it didn't say that you had to approve the actual design. It's just that we want to get a piece of art and put it in a certain place and spend this much money on it.
Okay, and which group did see the design and approve the design?
The Arts Commission.
Okay, all right. And I'm just going to go ahead and say it, because I've already said it to several people. My concern, it's a beautiful, beautiful piece of art. I don't have any concerns about what's there. I did go to the meeting with the three potential artists, where the community spoke, and I think they did a good job of that. The only thing that concerns me is that we've got a bobcat, and we don't have a rattler on it. And that would, if I had seen it, I think I would have noticed that, because when I drove by and saw it being painted, that was the first thing that jumped out at me. And so, you know, I wish someone along the way might have discovered that. But anyway, that's what I was just trying to figure out, is why sometimes we see them and sometimes we don't. So, y'all have any questions about this? Mr. Mendoza.
I share your concern, Mayor, about the final approval of this. I'm absolutely okay with the Arts Commission going through in the process. I just, for things like that, we would have caught that, the rattler missing, or those little touches that we want to add for that. But I am in agreeance of trying to find out who's the final approval of those projects.
It just seemed inconsistent, and it was like the one we missed is the only one I've had a comment on, that there was something that was missed. So that's why I was just trying to figure out, is how do these things route through? And I guess my questions are answered. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on this, on the process? I guess we'll vote on this one. And this is the art piece in the library, which is going to be an asset to our community. Mr. Scott?
We're waiting on you now.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, and then item six.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-193R approving an agreement with Half Associates Inc. for professional services associated with the development of the Quail Creek Preliminary Design Report for the former Quail Creek Country Club, property located at 2701 Airport Highway 21, in the estimated amount of $222,530. Authorized city manager her designated to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
All right, looking for a motion. Motion by Mr. Gleason, and I'll second it, because I'm in favor of this. But I do have an amendment, and it's simply to the, I guess it's the caption of the resolution. Is that correct, Mr. Gary, where I am? Okay, and I just want to make sure that we have the, that we recognize that we're going to do the community engagement and presentations. I know it's in the scope, I know it's in a lot of other places, but this is what gets stored in the records, as you well know. And so I just want to make sure that we get it in here. And so it's my motion to amend by, in the sentence where it says, "The professional services agreement with Half Associates to provide professional consulting services consisting of," to insert the words "community engagement and presentations," and then we pick up with landscape, architecture, civil engineering, et cetera. So that's my motion to amend.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Doesn't change anything, we're not spending any more money, we're not spending anything less, we're not telling you not to do something or anything different. I just want to recognize formally that there are going to be those, that you are going to do those community engagement, which I know you are. So, are there any other questions?
I have one after this amendment.
Oh, okay, well, let's have a vote on the amendment, Ms. Trevino. If it's blinking, you can push your button to vote.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, Mr. Gleason.
All right, thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I'm really adamant about with the addition of Quail Creek potentially being coming into the park system is the multimodal aspect of this. It's not mentioned in the design contract or anything else. And I just want to make sure that that verbiage is put in there. We do talk about the public transit part of it, but I want to be able to bring that into either the trail system, some sort of it, and I want that looked at. I don't know where we had that in there, but I would love to see that verbiage added, that as we're looking at the design and all of this, that we include the multimodal portion of this, of accessibility, along with the public transportation part of it.
Yes, sir. Jamie Lee Case, Director of Parks and Recreation. I actually had an intro meeting with our consultant and half and associates, who's joining me in the audience this evening. That was actually one of the initial discussions that we did have, was planning for it to connect into the grand plan, you know, with the Great Springs Project and our overall trail system for the future. So that is going to be a part of the overall planning concept, is how we're able to tie in, you know, because there's cart paths and all these other things. We have adjacent natural area that is on the other side of the railroad tracks. My grand vision is that we have a trail that would go under the railroad tracks, help provide that connectivity to where we're able to provide additional connectivity on the east side of our community.
Ms. Case, you just knocked it out of the park there, because I don't think people quite realize how close the railroad track, when you get to the bridge right there behind Walmart, it's right across, it's right across the river there. And I just want to make sure that the accessibility of that by either bicycle, pedestrian, walking, whatever, that we do not have to take some pressure off of 21 and integrate that into a potential loop around the town. So thank you very much for having that in there. It just wasn't listed in here.
Yes, sir, no, but it is part of where we're already going.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Any other thoughts, questions?
That was a good point. You knocked it out of the park.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, then we will vote on this one.
Mr. Scott?
Mr. Scott?
Mr. Scott?
Just call my name.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. And we are into what we call the non-consent agenda, and we are on to item eleven.
All right, let me clear this real quick. Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one on the first of two readings, reappointing a presiding municipal court judge for the San Marcos Municipal Court of Record for a term of two years and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion? I think I heard like three people, so I'll give that to Mr. Gleason. And we do. And second by Mr. Scott. Any thoughts, concerns? We're happy with her work, and so I'm gonna vote to continue.
She's an exceptional judge.
Yes, she is. Let's vote.
Lucky to have her.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, moving on, item twelve.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one ninety-six R, awarding indefinite delivery indefinite quantity master contract to Texas Materials Group for Street Overlay Services in the estimated amount of two million five hundred thousand. authorized city manager her designate to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion? Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Any questions? Thoughts, concerns? Ms. Trevino will vote.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero.
All right, thank you. Onto item thirteen.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one ninety-seven R, approving indefinite delivery indefinite quantity master contract for Line Tech Services LLC for the electric distribution maintenance and construction services in an annual amount not to exceed one million eight hundred thousand per year for three years, with the option to renew for up to two additional years. authorized city manager her designate to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion? Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Mr. Mendoza, I assume that motion was to approve?
Sorry.
All right. Questions? Thoughts, concerns? If not, Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero.
Onto item fourteen.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one ninety-eight R, approving the reissuance of revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed twenty-five million five hundred and fifty thousand, by the New Hope Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corporation for a residential senior leaving project known as the Villa Zelson Xavier Senior Residences, and located at twenty-six twenty-one South I-35 in San Marcos and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason, assuming that was to approve. I see Mr. Locke has joined us. Could you give us just a few sentences about what this really means and that we're not spending taxpayer money?
Certainly, yes. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, John Locke, Finance Director. This is, this project is complete now, and what the developer would like to, to do is convert the construction bonds to permanent financing bonds, and the internal revenue code requires the city's approval to do so, since this project took place within the, the city boundaries. And this, these bonds, the city has absolutely no financial responsibility for these bonds, or any kind of liability at all for the repayment of the bonds.
All right, thank you very much. Questions? Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero.
All right, onto item fifteen.
Discuss and consider appointments to fill vacancies on the following boards and commissions and provide direction to staff, A, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, B, Citizen Utility Advisory Board, C, Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay, council, we have three. And we need to make a determination. And I didn't get that document up before I sat down here. Okay. Anybody who has an idea of a nomination for any of them?
I was going to nominate, she's the only applicant we have here for the animal advisory board, but Ashton Davis.
This is a person who's only been in San Marcos for two months?
Yes, ma'am, I just, unless we wanna put it away for another chance, I was trying to get somebody on the board. But if the rest of the council wants to wait until a later date, okay?
Didn't we wait from the last time too?
We did, yes. We were waiting and waiting.
Right. I mean, I, I tried to pull, I put a call out. I'm sure Matthew did too, you know, Cat Lady? Animal, animal guy. The, the reality of the situation is that a lot of our neighbors are overworked and underpaid, and folks are doordashing and trying to do all a bunch of stuff to make ends meet, and a lot of our animal advocates simply do not have the capacity. And so this person applied, I feel like it's, it's worth it to give them a shot. I mean, between last meeting and this one, between all of us, we weren't able to secure somebody else, so. I mean, and the body, it moves as a committee, so it's like maybe it could be a good teachable moment, or they could, yeah.
Ms. Garza is correct. I did put a call out, and I didn't get anybody. What would be the next time we could discuss this particular vacancy?
Well, either put it on the agenda, or ask, we can ask Ms., Ms. Trevino to, to bring back as an appointment. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the two months, even if it's the only one, because I'm not seeing.
Did, did anybody call and confirm that it was only two months, or like what that?
I, I did not, I'm sorry.
No?
But I'm not seeing in her, his, I'm not sure. I'm not seeing in this person's application anything about animals. That their interest, that that's where their interest is. And that's, I think I'll wait.
Then instead of maybe next meeting, could we possibly give it a month's timeframe? I mean, maybe we just didn't give it up time.
When was the last time these items were, I'm gonna say advertised by our communications department?
I believe this one did not, but we also reached out to the board and asked them for help, you know, with their, other agencies that they work with to also kinda mention if they live within the city limits and stuff, but I was thinking right now, it's just we'll work with communications to do like a, maybe a social media blast and.
I, I think that's what we need to do.
Is any, is anybody else like interested in, in giving this person a chance? I just, I, I've, I have, since I was elected, and been talking about the barriers for participation. We know that our neighbors really care deeply about all these issues, all the, all the committees and boards, but they don't have the capacity. And, I mean, what was the date of their application? Like, they are a resident director, so like they are, they-
June.
June?
June seventeen.
Right, so, yeah, they're, they work here full-time, like they're committed to being a San Markan, like they, I don't know, it's, it's like not, I don't know, I'm like, I would be interested in giving them a shot. I mean, I really, I really put the call out there.
Cherry Boye had also assisted us too, so she said she reached out to people and they'll take hers.
If, if this person applying had said, you know, I, I, I love dogs and cats, I want to see what we can do to help the animal shelter, et cetera, et cetera. If they had said anything like that in here, I, I would be more comfortable, but because they didn't even address animals or what they might be able to do on that committee, I'm just not comfortable and I'm willing to wait. Or someone who does.
Like, I mean, if, if you were really interested in like what all their, what they could bring to the table, why, why didn't you call them? Right? Like, to me, it's like their willingness to serve is what is like the highlight for me right now.
Then put her name in a nominator, and we can vote.
They say they're non-binary. I will nominate them.
Okay.
I, I have two questions.
Ashton?
When they applied, did they apply for any other boards, or only animal services?
Let me go back to my system, Mr. Gleason.
While she's looking for that, I will say that I know anecdotally,
Two others.
Ms. Bettis Carey attended the first meeting for the Equity Cabinet, and this is the group that Dr. Ray is doing, and they're gonna be looking at some transportation with the city of San Marcos, and they are being paid, you know, for their service. And one of the things that Ms. Bettis Carey said, that a lot of them that wanted to participate, that they did say that it's more about the time commitment, not about the money, or not about those, you know, because I know we've been trying to see what are the reasons why people don't, don't serve, and so they did say that it was about the time commitment, that, you know, people were with other obligations, and that that's why they weren't able to, to commit to serving.
Does this one meet monthly or quarterly? I'm thinking this is a quarterly.
Quarterly.
Yeah.
For this one in specific, when I talk to like my fellow crazy-for-cats ladies, yeah, it was like we, we feel like we have like a direct line to folks on the ground who can advocate for us and who could, who use their voices to like do governmental type of advocacy. So I'd rather Uber or DoorDash to bring more money into my household, or whatever, whatever. And, I mean, I did tell some folks, like there's some people, there's, we have one applicant, and they've only been in San Marcos for, I think I said one month or something, I couldn't remember. The general consensus was, look, nobody else is stepping up and give them a chance, but if y'all aren't feeling that, then I really hope that you guys continue to put the call out.
Well, I, I think, ma'am, that's, some people could be like me, when you join something new, you may not know exactly what you're gonna be doing yet, so kinda get a feel for it, and then apply yourself and things and ideas that you can present, because, I mean, her heart's obviously into it, if she chose the, the animal.
Right.
She also applied for Ethics Review Commission and Housing Authority Board. Those were her three.
Then my one other question is also, is this a full position, a full term?
Probably not, because we're not doing it at regular time.
Twenty twenty-seven.
I don't know.
Twenty twenty-seven? But that's three years.
Right, so it's a full vacancy then.
Right.
Well, it's gonna be short, six months or something.
Yeah. I don't know. I feel like there's not, for newcomers, there's not a whole lot of pathways of engagement. Like, I was really blessed that I stumbled upon a sitting council member at the university who happened to be my internship site coordinator, and that was like my inside scoop pathway to become engaged civically and to become engaged in the community, which was awesome. But, I don't know. The way I see it is like, if, if somebody wants to participate, we should give them the opportunity. But if nobody else is feeling that, then y'all go find us somebody, I guess, who's lived here a hundred years.
We could do a social media blast and bring it back at the next meeting, the fifteen.
Yeah, it's the, no, no indication of animals in, in the application of this person, more so than the short length of time.
Mayor, I'll pull my nomination here, as long as-
Oh, you didn't have a nomination, Ms. Garza did.
He had it first.
I did originally, yes, ma'am.
Did you formally say, yes, I want to nominate, when you gave your name?
Yes, ma'am, I did. Because the option being, I was the only person we had available. But hearing everybody here, and I, I do see what you're saying, I had my concerns also about the two months. Again, to me, this is a very important board. I would be willing to wait a month, and then that's it. I, I think we waited a long time just for this board. I can give it a month, and then we'll see if we can get there. I mean, just because.
Right, because I mean, honestly, let's be for real. We have appointed people to boards, and they have like one very surface-level arti- like superficial statement about why they're being, that why they wanna be on the board. So I feel like we're, we're really not being for real right now.
I'll, I'll give it a go.
I will just say, for those who want to know this person's why, you give them a call, they have their phone number and their email.
You know, we always have to consider also, this person might say, forget it. I mean, under twice, and I don't get appointed, and then we don't, we don't have anyone. But.
And then we wonder why we have the same rotation of people.
But if there are vacancies in the other two boards in which this person showed interest, they would be, they would be given to us for those boards, correct?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
If a vacancy comes up on one of the other boards that this person applied for, then they would be in our packet for that.
Is that her number, was the animal shelter her number one?
I can't tell. Oh, it doesn't show on their application, which is their first choice, does it? I think that's one of the things we've had with this application program.
I mean, I wouldn't pull your nomination, if you, if you wanna do it, let's just do it.
Well, I, I wasn't aware of the other she had applied for. This person applied for
Two others.
Two other boards. I honestly did not see, didn't know that. But again, I am gonna do some hard work now, in the next month. Either be more applicants, or we're gonna still be where we're at now. But I, I'll, I'll give it a month.
A question, is this group having trouble making quorum?
Well, that is a good question.
That we know of?
I'm right here, ma'am. Not that I know of, because they make, no, I do not think so. Let me get with you, see, over quick.
It's an eight or nine-person board. That has a veterinarian, a city official, animal welfare organization, a person appointed by the city of Kyle, city of Buta, Hayes County.
No, ma'am, I don't think they have issues meeting quorum.
Yeah. Then I'm, I'm good with a month, and I will try to find time
I'll find, I'll get somebody out there.
To call this person and see what their thoughts are. They might be a, they might be a lovely cat person like we are.
So request to postpone for one month.
Well, I don't. Can we just give direction to bring it back in a month? Because it's not like an ordinance or a resolution to postpone.
Yes, I can't get my mic.
Back to work.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But that's one. We do have two more, and we've got the Citizen Utility Advisory Board and the Parks and Rec Board. And the Parks and Rec Board had a number of people who were interested, so I will await nominations. I need to look up one thing here. What, what happened to it? Oh, here we go. I made some notes, but I don't think I wrote it all down.
I have a nomination for the Parks and Rec.
Okay.
The Alejandra Roman.
Okay.
Yeah. I think they've done, they have good volunteer work.
Yes, that was, that was an impressive background.
Yeah, man, balancing schoolwork and a manager that I literally know is wild.
And a volunteer for the Green Belt Alliance.
Mm-hmm, and the San Marcos Art Gallery. So that's, that's my nomination.
So you're going to nominate that person? We don't need a second? Alejandro Roman?
For Parks.
For Parks. There are the nominations for Parks Board. Then this is a one for one, and it's just a vote.
I, I did wanna point out that they are currently volunteering with the Green Belt Alliance, which-
I just said that.
I do, I, sorry, I didn't.
I know, you, you don't have your thing in.
I took it out. Thank you.
But, yes.
Thank you.
Good point. It's not blinking.
I'm just staring at y'all.
Look, I want the record to reflect that Shane was on it this time.
Yeah, they were pressing their buttons early.
I just get bored, and I get off, and y'all have to call me back.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, and for QAB?
How many were for that?
Just one. There's one application for one position on QAB.
Pepas.
Mm-hmm. Applying for the finance and accounting slot on there. Which I guess is because that was probably the only one open? Yeah, okay.
I don't know, because I just don't know anything about this person.
I know, it's a bit on their application, that's pretty much it.
Nothing.
Well, there's some.
They, it's literally one sentence. They, it's literally one sentence.
No argument there.
Web and graphic designer, former ethics professor, solar panel owner, based off this, I have no idea what their why is, uh, why do they want to be on the Citizens Utility Advisor Board? Having said that, I think we should wait a month.
I'm just laughing, not at you.
Um, and they did apply for two other.
Right?
Oh, actually, they applied for Citizen at Large and the Financer Accounting.
And I will tell you, I want to point out, too, that John Bilidou, Bilidou, um, worked in the wholesale electric power industry and natural gas industry.
Yeah, I noticed.
For a long time, I was like, I was like, that would have been a good match for QAB, especially the wholesale electric, but...
He's served on something before, I remember this name, I don't know if it was QAB or what, but he's not on now, so even if he had, could be eligible. Okay, so do we want to postpone the, uh, the, the QAB one for a month?
Did Mr. Bilidou, uh, sign up for any other boards? He did not, only the Parks.
Let me...
I was kidding, you guys, no, I don't need, I honestly, I feel like I don't, I don't need to know their, their why, like, uh, I think if we wanted that, we should specifically ask that in the, um, in the application, 'cause we don't. I mean, I mean, like, we ask it, like, and serving on a board or commission, and then we leave it open for like whichever, so it's like, maybe we should add some specificity to the situation, um, if that's what we want. I feel like this person, um, they're the only applicant, I, I think historically, we haven't gotten a whole lot of hits for this, so I'm at the point where I'm not even gonna pretend that this application gives us some sort of like insight on this person's like heart or why or soul. If they want to serve, they live here, I'm willing to give them the opportunity because no one else is showing up at the moment, so, that, I was being facetious.
Yeah, and they, uh, they have been here for twelve years.
I mean, I don't care about that, like, I feel like, yeah.
Well, they made a big deal out of the two months, I thought I'd make a big deal out of the twelve years.
The QAB one is a lot, is very technical, um, and there's a lot of finances involved in it, and it deserve, it does, does deserve a diverse, uh, makeup of the board, too, 'cause there's real financial ramifications to it.
And it is the finance position that's open.
It is a finance position, which they, um, uh, so I, I, I really wish, I'll, I'll say it again, and I, we've all kind of said it, I really wish people would fill out why they, their expertise or membership or geographical location, all this stuff really is important.
Well, a lot of people do take that opportunity, and I wish they all did, but some do a great job of telling us...
Right.
Why they would bring value to that board.
Well, and it's, and it's difficult when they're applying for three boards, and, you know, I mean, I get that part.
I would write a whole life story, 'cause I'm a chatty cat, you can't shut me up, but like, I can see where some people, it's like, oh, they're, they're asking, why do you want to start on a board generally, right? So it's like, well, I, I want to do good in my community, I want to be a good neighbor, I want to get engaged, so perhaps that should be a conversation we should have in the future, like really fleshing out what we want, like, what can help give us that insight? Um, yeah, and I have done in the past, I would Google and look people up and all that, but what I have found is, like, the Human Services Board, for example, nothing, none of that sleuthing, my very amateur sleuthing, compares to actually seeing them in action, right? Like, seeing the meetings, like, that's where you really can tell, um, like, who they are as our neighbor, and I've been pretty content, generally speaking, with all the folks that we've appointed, so...
We could do a social media blast on Q, QAB and animal.
Um, I'm gonna call this gentleman who has the background, just to see if he would be interested in QAB, but, but here's, uh, and if we can't talk about this now, Mr. Gary, just let me know, but what it says is, "Why are you interested in serving on a board or commission?" As, um, Ms. Garza said, perhaps we need to say, "Why are you interested in serving on this board?" Or the boards for which you have applied, and, you know, what, what can you bring to the table, basically? Are y'all good with me, ma, making this a little bit more clear, that, you know, we, we have, often we have multiple people applying, and so, so tell us, and back in the old days before, you know, we had all this online request, which we've only had, what, four or five years, I would write a letter to council members, like a cover letter for a job, and say, "This is what I can bring to this commission." So, um, and y'all remember when we just had the paper applications, we didn't have any of this unless someone happened to, to go to the extra effort to email us, so now, we, we at least get something, but I think we need to tell them what we're really looking for, this is probably the, uh, sample that comes from the company that has the software, but if we could be a little bit more specific, um...
I really liked the second question on there, um, it is kind of broad, and it's difficult when you're applying for multiple boards, and one thing I wish we would do is, when they've applied for multiples, and then say there's a re-application or, um, an opening, that we put that person back into the pool, that we give them a chance to say, "Hey, hey, by the way, we now are, we, you applied for three boards, two of those have filled up, would you like to rewrite that for the one particular board?"
That would be excellent, if, if we, if we're, if we've identified them like we have here, and we know which ones they are that they've shown some interest in, just say, "This is the opening that we have, tell us..."
Would you like to clarify or give them a chance to do?
What, what you bring to, what you bring?
Okay.
Okay, so...
Yeah, yeah, I feel like we've talked about the whole process of the application, and there has been like a lot of improvement from, I guess, the, the origin story of the first applications and all of that, um, yeah, I think there's a lot of room for growth just to, to truly, uh, be able to, I guess, vet folks and all of that, but also to let people, like, demystify what the roles mean and the commitment is, and that there's, like in the Animal Services Committee, there's folks who are willing to, "Oh, you know, I'll take you out to coffee, like, I'll give you some scoop, I'll give you some background, oh, you kind of love cats, but you don't know like the lore of the animal shelter," like, in every of the boards and commissions, there's at least one nerd, I say that with love, um, who's gonna be down to sit and meet with a new person or whatever, so, yeah, something for the future, but I don't know, y'all do whatever you want for this.
No.
Nominating you.
Um...
I know.
Yeah, do we have, Ms. Trevino, when someone is applying, they, they find out that, you know, we, we, we've got a bunch of, it's the, the annual, uh, application, um... Is there anything on their online, 'cause I've never filled the thing out, that says meets quarterly, meets monthly?
Not on the application, but on the website it does. Under the Boards and Commission.
I know it does there, but if they're filling out the application, do they see that?
No, because it's very limited, like, it's like a template, we would have to ask them to update it on their end instead of us having access on our end.
Here, here's my question.
Yeah.
Where we have the list of boards, like this one says Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, can we put parentheses after that meets quarterly or meets monthly? Do we have enough room?
We will play with that, I'll let you know.
Let, let's see what we can do there, 'cause I...
It's like a Google form type of thing, right? Like, it's like, kind of like a Google, yeah.
It's like an online template.
Yeah, they're super limited.
Um, but I think that might, might encourage some people, and it might, for some people, go, "Oh, my goodness," and I know some of them are different, like Human Services gets very intense during one part of the year, and then they're, they're done, so I'm not sure how we would do that one, but I think that would be helpful, or, um, is there, when somebody goes to the applications, right underneath it, is there a link to the Boards and Commissions so that they see it and they can, just say, "For more information on each board..."
On the application itself.
Click here, because the Boards and Commissions is what has the, the mission and the vision, and, you know, the information from the ordinance, so the easier we can make it for them to not have to go track the other down.
Right.
So wherever it is that people find this link, just link it to all the Boards and Commissions, say, "You can find more information here."
Okay.
And encourage them to, to find that. But I think how often they meet would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, I think those are good first steps, but in the future, like, maybe a work session or something, we can like unpack different ways to encourage more conversation, to demystify what the roles are, and the informal, informal resources available for people to be engaged, like staff is super helpful.
Yeah, you're gonna want to do that in December, 'cause remember, we put the call out in late December, early January for next year.
'Cause I'm booked until December, so that's excellent, in my...
Well, and I, I always tell everybody, have you ever attended one of their meetings? Like, when somebody says, "Hey, I'm interested," and I'm like, "Have you ever gone to one of their meetings?" Like, go, go sit and see if it really interests you, or go back, and some of them are on video, some of them are not, I know it's a little difficult there, but...
Oh, that's another link.
The link, the videos.
The video link.
I'm bringing up all kinds of stuff with it.
No, they're a good idea, we've had these conversations in bits and pieces, like, since I've been elected, and I went on a heavy rant, that was one of my, like, reasons why I thought we needed equity training to understand, um, how to be more inclusive, and that's no shade, I think we, again, the whole city, city staff, city leadership has done an awesome job in improving every year, but equity is like a process, right? It's like a perpetual process, so, um, we all have all these great little ideas, and then we kind of drop the ball on it sometimes, us, not you, 'cause ev, every recommendation we've given, Ms. Trevino, you have put it in place, so I do appreciate that.
Okay.
For sure.
I'm making myself a note now to call. Okay.
We got them on this.
Okay, so we've done one, and we will see two of them, um, when it comes back with Communications providing assistance on the animal shelter. Okay, Ms. Trevino, have we finished everything on our agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then there being no business before, further business before us, I will adjourn this meeting at six fifty-nine.
There's no... But...
Yes, if there had been, did you have question and answers?
The question, we would have the answers.
Exactly.
Well, I don't know, sometimes they provide answers.
It's true, they're not supposed to.
But surely, did you, we can go back.
I, I can ask a question.
If you do, you'll need to go to the microphone.
And when I said answers, I was lying, I am not gonna answer anything.
Uh, we'll need your name.
My name is Carter Lawson, um, I, I suppose, we mentioned this applicant for the, we being you guys, mentioned the applicant for the Animal Services Committee. Um, and I think that something you could also ask as well, is that they shouldn't, they have no prior experience with the animals, you could also ask them in that interview process, were you just applying for several committees to apply for several committees 'cause you've just moved here and you want to be involved? Or do you have a serious interest in one of these? Because as you pointed out, the lack of experience, it does just point to, one, to be involved, which is great, 'cause they're new to the city, but, yeah.
Yeah.
We will ask that, I think that's a good question.
Yeah, it wasn't just experience, it was interest.
Yes.
Yeah, but yes, good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But not the Animal Services Board, okay? Because that one is, we're gonna put you through the wringer.
Anyone else? And we didn't have anyone sign up online, then I will adjourn us at seven o'clock.
Oh, I just wanted to push it, I just, that's a plan.